So a lot of things from the raised question, and I, I already know the answer. That's the reason why you want to vote for me. Even though we may already know Republicans.
Call the meeting to order at six minutes after 6:30. Looks like all the school board members are present with the exception of school board member one with the resignation in December. We'll now ask the audience to join the school board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance is as high as the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item three, we have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. First adjustment, do we have a motion?
I move we add agenda item, school board chair resignation after public session.
Is there a second? There's been a motion made and a motion seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. School board member Leary. School board member Walters.
Yes.
School board member Shiman.
Yes.
School board member Tardif. School board member Mazdin.
Yes.
School board member Johnston. Motion passes seven zero, adding agenda item, school board chair resignation after public session. Moving on to public session, agenda item number four, is there anybody that would like to speak from the public? I don't have the public session sheet.
Mr. Mayor.
There's something you left out.
I believe there's a second adjustment to the agenda.
Yeah, the second, right. Okay. Right there. My apologies, we skipped over an adjustment to the agenda. Do I have a second motion?
Yes, yes. I move we change agenda item, election of school board chair and vice chair to discussion of school board chair and vice chair positions.
We have, we have a motion made and a motion seconded. Any discussion? School board member Leary.
I thought we were supposed to have this election done back in December, so I'm not sure why we're pushing it off another week or two weeks. I'm not really sure why we aren't doing this one.
Thank you. School board member Johnston.
Reading our policy this afternoon, I believe it says that if we do not elect officers in December, that we will do so in January. However, I don't see any specific date in January that's identified. So I don't believe that if we push it back another week or whatever, that there would be any conflict with the policy.
Thank you. School board member Leary.
Is there a reason we need to push off versus taking care of it tonight?
Thank you. School board member Walters.
So I think that's why we wanted to have a bit of a discussion about it as opposed to voting. I know I for one was feeling like in, in the spirit of increased communication, both internally and externally with the community, that we wanted to have an opportunity to have a conversation about it. We did just lose our board chair, and it's an opportunity for us to go back to what the roles and responsibilities are of the chair and the vice chair, make sure that everyone is clear on those reasons or those responsibilities, and then we can move forward. And I, and I also personally had felt that initially we had not had a board meeting scheduled till January 15th, and we're having this one because I had requested to have a board workshop on communication. So it wouldn't have happened until the 15th anyway. So that was my thought behind it.
Any discussion? School board member Shiman.
I do believe that there, there, it's, it's legal if we wanted to, to vote tonight as well. In other words, you can have a discussion and vote because this is not, this is not in, this is part of the public session. This is part of our basic session. So that is a possibility if people want it, to do it tonight after discussion.
Any further discussion? School board member Mazdin.
One of the reasons that I'm very concerned about this topic here and properly doing it is that, first of all, am I, I'll bring it in closer. One of the reasons that I'm very concerned about all of this, and thus my interest in, in getting this arranged in what I consider to be a much more appropriate way of doing this. People, those guys out there, need to know what we're doing, why we're doing it, and when we are electing somebody or some person to a position, how did we come to do that? In the things that I've been involved in, in the school board, for a number of years now, one of the things that to me is very noticeable, even the board doesn't know for sure what they're doing. And it comes back to what information is available. When I ask officials, people in the, in the school department questions, many cases, I already know the answer. I already know it. The people out there don't, and they need to hear the answer. And thus, one of the things I'm also going to be looking for is I want those that are nominated to answer questions before the election, so that you, as well as us, know what we're getting. And what it is that that person or persons needs to be taken into account. One of the problems that we've had is lack of communications. This is part of that, part of what is needed, so that everybody knows what's going on. And thus, the reason why this is so important to me. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, back to the motion that has been made and seconded. That motion is, I move we change the agenda item, election of school board chair and vice chair to discussion of school board chair and vice chair positions. A roll call vote. School board member Leary.
Yes.
Yes. School board member Walters.
Yes.
School board member Shiman.
Yes.
School board member Tardif.
Yes.
School board member Mazdin. And school board member Johnston. Motion passes six zero to move the agenda item, elections of school board chair and vice chair to discussion of school board chair and vice chair. Now we're at agenda item four, public session. Thank you for bearing with us. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing no members of the public, moving on to agenda item five, which is one of the adjustments you'll see is the school board chair resignation. Is there a motion? School board member Shiman.
I should, I, I move that we accept the school board chair Garrett Abramson's resignation from the school board effective December 18, 2019.
There's been a motion, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? School board member Johnston.
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if we have received a written resignation from Garrett, and if that is something that we really need to have in our hands? I'm just curious on that.
It is my understanding that you did receive a written letter of resignation, and I believe it was in the packet or. There was an email sent to the city council per their request, which is the resignation.
I'm sorry, can, can you repeat that, please?
There was an email sent to.
I think it went to Michelle, the clerk, and then I asked, asked for it, and then we didn't get it in time to put in the packet, but we can certainly send it via email to all of you.
Okay, thank you. That, that clarification is very helpful.
Yep.
And that would be great to receive it by email.
Thank you. Any further discussion? School board member Tardif.
I just hope that you keep that as a matter of record, in his file or somewhere.
Yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion, school board member Shiman.
I personally would like to thank him for the service that he provided. He worked very hard. He was particularly important in negotiations, I believe, in the last year. He's done, made a lot of contribution to the community, and I salute him for it personally.
Further discussion, school board member Leary.
I just want to reiterate what Steve said. I think he was a very vital part of this board and with regrets, I was sad to see him leave.
School board member Mazdin.
I would like for her to repeat what she just said.
Oh, can you? I said I agree with what Steve said, and I was sad to see him leave. I think he was a vital part of this school board.
Any, any further discussion?
Yeah, it's customary, we've, school board members that have left, we've presented them with a plaque, so if the board would like to do that, we can invite him in and say some nice words because he's been here with us for a long time, and he was very good in negotiations, but instrumental in the strategic plan, which has been guiding us for a long time now. So I think that's the big body of work that he helped us with. So if that's something that the board would be like to do, I can do a plaque and then invite him in, and then we can talk, we all can give him some good words. Is that okay?
I would favor that, does it, I'm sorry, does this require some kind of motion or?
No.
I would, personally I'd favor that. School board member Mazdin.
To go back to what I said.
Speak into the microphone, please, thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. I'm the one that's made the most noise about the speaker system. I'm still not satisfied. In case people, to digress for one minute, in case people don't understand what I'm talking about, the problem is clarity, 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 not how loud it is. The speaking system here is not clear. If you want an example of what I'm talking about, go to the middle school auditorium and listen to their speaker system. That's clarity. Okay? We'll talk on that later. Okay, in terms of the topic that we're talking about right now, one of the things that needs to be kept in mind is what I was talking about here a few minutes ago. Yes, I know all these people. I've worked with these people. The problem is, you don't know these people. You don't know them as well as I do, and I don't know them that well. When you are looking at us and we're talking about putting somebody in a position that carries a lot of responsibility, you should be concerned about who that person is, and what that person thinks, and what that person's going to do in this position. And the only way that that can happen is we have to change the way that we've been doing it. The way we've been doing it, we all stand up here, make our nominations, have the election, and then what happens? You don't know anything about these people. Some of us right now have questions about just exactly what is the position of the chair of the board, what's the responsibility of it with a new charter that applies to it. Okay, what is the responsibility? If Bill, whoever the mayor is, is going to run the meetings, then what's the chair do? And those are things that you should have an answer to before we decide to make that person the chair of the board. Or is it just a figurehead who gets honored because he's the chair or she's the chair? That's the reason for this discussion. Oh, pardon me. I'm sorry, my ears again. Okay, I vote to accept his resignation. I, I go by the printed part, and I missed that part of it. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Are there any further discussions?
Yes.
School board member.
I was just mentioning that we were just talking, Stan, about thanking Garrett for what he does. There is a discussion that you, you know, you're talking about, but we're about to talk about that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But I, I just wanted to.
I thought we had jumped down one, one.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Already done that.
I just wanted to be thankful to, for him for his service. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. School board member Johnston.
I would just like to say that I, I approve of the superintendent's intention to recognize Garrett for his contributions with a plaque.
Thank you. Just in, while there was some discussion going on, I just want to point out that you do have some policies and procedures in your policy section B, Board Governance and Operations book, and that is on page one of BDA, Board Organizational Meeting. And then you also have BDB, which is Board Officers, and it spells out what the duties of the chair is, chair are, what the duties of the mayor are, what the duties of the vice chair are, so on and so forth. So when we do have the discussion, you would probably want to make sure that you have those duties available so that you can add that in as part of your discussion, so that you can seek the clarity that you're looking for.
May I ask one question?
School board member Mazdin.
Do we have a written copy of the resignation?
That question was asked and answered, the, and the answer was that the school board member Abramson had sent an email to the city clerk, Michelle Hughes, has not been included in the packet, but it will get sent out to all of you.
That's an important issue, because otherwise, if he went traveling to California with still the chair, and we here decided we were going to replace him, that could end up happening without a written copy. Thus the importance for that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. School board member Leary.
With regrets, yes.
School board member Walters.
Yes.
School board member Shiman.
Also with regret, yes.
School board member Tardif. School board member Mazdin. And school board member Johnston. Motion passes six zero to accept board chair Garrett Abramson's resignation from the school board effective December 18, 2019. Moving on to new agenda item, agenda item six, which is discussion of school board chair and vice chair. and Vice-Chair Positions. This is the, this is the area that was an adjustment to the agenda. So, Discussion of School Board Chair and Vice-Chair Positions. School Board Member Walters?
I did just want to share, so if anyone here, I do have a copy of BDB that the mayor was just referencing, if anyone wanted me to share a copy? I don't know, Stanley, if you want me to pass that down to you?
I'm sorry, I'm sort of lost over here. Emily, you were saying you have a copy of BDB, correct, that you were trying to share with us?
Yeah, I just, I just sent it down your way, a copy of it. If you wanted to see, it's the essential functions of the Board Chair and the Vice-Chair, as well as the mayor's role, just as a reference.
I also have one right here, but I see now that it gets, these two pages got separated, which is why I was confused. But I do have a copy myself, so thank you.
So, so in looking at BDB, just for the audience and folks listening, the duties of the Chair are to sign the instruments, acts, and orders necessary to carry out state requirements and the will of the school board. Item B, consult with the superintendent in planning of the school board meeting agendas. C, confer with the superintendent on crucial matters that may occur between school board meetings. D, appoint subcommittees and serve as ex officio member of all such committees. E, call special meetings of the school board as necessary. F, be the public spokesperson for the school board at all times, except as responsibility is specifically delegated to others. And G, in the absence of the mayor, the Chair will preside and be responsible for the orderly conduct of all school board meetings. The Chair shall have the right, as other school board members have, to offer motions, discuss questions, and vote. Duties of the Vice-Chair. In absence of the Chair, the Vice-Chair shall perform all the duties of the Chair. Are there any discussion?
Stanley, this was your opportunity to share your, your thoughts. I know you, you sort of shared them already, but is there anything in addition to the duties of the Chair that were, that's outlined in the policy? Is there anything else in particular that you're seeking, or? Or is, or is, or something that you're, you're hoping, that you want to see happen as we move into elections?
School Board Member Mostyn, that question is for you. This is essentially the opportunity for you to speak on some of the other...
I'm asked to have a repeat of it, please, so that, I lost part of what you said. Go ahead.
I think it's more, there was more a statement of, you had some issues that you brought up that you wanted to get out to the public in clarity, and therefore, here is the opportunity to do so, as we're at the discussion phase, and that is the discussion of the, discussion of School Board Chair and Vice-Chair Positions.
So I read back into where you are. Okay, thank you. One of the difficulties with this is that everything's obvious until you come into practice. And all of a sudden, things aren't so clear anymore. For example, and these are things that have actually happened here in the Saco school system over the last couple, three years. What happens if the Chair disagrees with the superintendent? Does...
Stan, just so everyone can hear you, can you, can you speak directly into the mic?
The superintendent... What's the problem?
You can pull it closer if you want.
Am I speaking into it?
Sometimes.
Okay, sometimes, I'm sorry. What happens if the Chair disagrees with the superintendent? Now, as a reminder for everybody, the school board is the boss. The superintendent works for the school board. And yet, the superintendent is the expert. He's the one who knows education. That's why you hired him. And his first responsibility is making sure that good education practices are being put into effect in the school system of Saco. However, it is the responsibility of the school board to establish the policies by which the school system is going to operate under. And thus, you can have, and have had disagreements between those two positions over what should be done. And sometimes, it's worked out, and a lot of times, it has not. Another aspect, if the school board chair is asked a question by the superintendent about a topic that hasn't been covered by the school board, when he's answering, is he answering for the school board? Or is he answering for himself? After all, the school board hasn't voiced its opinion on that particular topic as yet. And we've had a number of instances of that type of thing that have happened over the last few years. And when you start looking at some of those issues, this policy here is not that clear anymore. And thus, for me, one of the things I want is whoever gets nominated, I want an opportunity to raise those kinds of questions of those people. And I'm the first to admit, there is no right answer. But somehow, we have to be able to deal with those. And in the past, many of those have not been very successfully handled. We've all got the war stories. I don't want to go through all those. I'm trying to see what we can do to make it better. How do we handle that? And maybe, just by bringing the question up, putting it on the table, at least people start thinking about it, and stop throwing darts at each other. I operate from the assumption that everybody on this table, in this board, have the best interest of Saco school system at heart. That doesn't mean they agree with me. That doesn't mean that I should agree with them. But the Chair has got to figure out a way to get this disparate collection of people somehow working together. And I want a Chair that's going to take those kinds of things into consideration. It's important to you that they do that. You want a good board. A good board doesn't come about through these pieces of paper. Now, I have seen quite a bit of improvement on the school board in the time that I've been back. This is my second time here, for those of you that don't know that. I've seen a lot of improvement. But I also see situations where people are more interested in the vote than they are in taking into consideration the good of the school system. To me, anytime somebody disagrees with me, votes against my position, I want to know what I have to do to satisfy them. Because that's how you bring about unity, by working together. I want a Chair and a Vice-Chair that that's going to become a major concern. That's how you get the good school system. That's how you get a good school board. People got to become more concerned about working together, and that starts with the leadership. You have to be concerned with bringing everybody together. So in this, after we've nominated people, I want the opportunity to pose questions to them about the very kinds of things I'm talking about, and let them tell us what they're thinking. We're going to be putting them in that position. We have a right to know what their thinking is on something like that, and it's not an academic exercise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? School Board Member Johnston.
I think that Stanley has made some very good points, and as I'm looking at this document now, our policy, I'm realizing that although it lists a lot of specific things that the officers are responsible for, that in a sense, it's sort of a shallow document, because the communication piece that we're so, that's so important to us tonight, I mean, that's part of our theme, I guess you could say, the whole communication piece is implied, but not necessarily, you know, fully, fully explained, I guess. So to me, one of the most important things about the officers of this board is that they really have a mission to communicate with the rest of the board. A few years ago, we instituted a, I won't say a policy, it was a practice, for the, for the Chair and the Vice-Chair to have a bi-monthly meeting with the superintendent, just to make sure that information was not falling through the cracks somehow. And I personally think that that's a very useful way of getting information out. And I think that, again, it's, it's important that that information get shared with the whole board, because if we have a communication problem, which is what we're sort of feeling at this point in time, and I think it goes, it goes right through the whole district, in a sense, it goes to the community, it goes to the city government, there's no better way than to really try to, to open up to each other, to be straightforward with each other, to share, I mean, obviously, we're not talking about things that are related to confidentiality, but to really know what's going on, what's good, and what maybe needs improvement. So I think that when we're talking about exploring what we, the characteristics of the Board Chair and Vice-Chair that we're looking for, to me, one of the major pieces is attentiveness, I think. I mean, we're all volunteers, in a sense, but attentiveness to, to the issues, and then communication in an appropriate way to all of the board members. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Superintendent DePatsy?
I just want to piggyback, I actually agree with Beth. I'm going on my fourth chair. All the chairs did very different ways of working with me. I think the biggest thing on that list has to be time. Whoever is going to be the Chair needs to devote the time. You cannot, it, it's actually not bi-weekly, it should be weekly, that I should sit down with the Board Chair, this is what's going on, and I think, over the past four years, this is what's, it's broken down. Some board members know certain things, other board members don't know. So I think whoever's going to do that, we need to figure out a communication, again, going back to communication, where it's going to go. And they got to, you know, approve stuff in a timely manner. Celeste's over there, we, we wait, we wait, we wait, you know? No offense, but all the board chairs were late trying to prove these agendas. So whoever's going to do it needs to be, have the time, and have to be honest, sit down and spend the time, so we, and then communicate to the rest of the board. That is essential. That's just my two cents, this is, again, we're going on my fourth one, so whoever's going to do it needs to be, needs to have those characteristics.
Thank you. Further discussion? School Board Member Johnston, then School Board Member Mostyn.
Just to follow up on what the superintendent said, I think that's what I meant by attentiveness. There's a lot to keep track of, and it's hard to do it, and we are, most of us involved in other things in our lives, but I agree that it does take a certain amount of time commitment to be involved in all of these. And also, Mr. Superintendent, you are correct that, I mean, I feel like this as a board member in general, that the agenda process, or creating of the agenda, is a really important thing. Because, again, I think the board should, I've always said that I think the board should not be taken by surprise about things that are on the agenda, but it's an important, it's our important business. I mean, we do things in committee, and that's very important, too, but when it comes to the board agenda, it needs to be taking care of the business that is at hand. Thank you.
School Board Member Mostyn.
Okay. Time. Interesting topic. Anybody here a science fiction reader? It's amazing how many books are written about time, and how valuable it is, and how important it is to the world that we live in. And I'm well aware of the fact that the kind of things that I'm talking about take time. I'm also aware of the fact that when a group starts working together like that, with specific objectives of figuring out how to work with the guy that disagrees with me, in the end, I save time, because I've come to understand him or her. And so when she or he is speaking to me, we're able to start using shorthand to talk to each other without blowing up in each other's face. And that only comes about through the kinds of things that I'm talking about. You have to be more considerate of the other person's view. That's how a unified group comes about. And thus, that's not wasted time. The wasted time is not doing that, because then, when you come to the really hard topics, you don't have anything in common, so as a result, it's whoever got the vote of four to three. And that's how you end up with half the room walking out angry with each other. And so it's important, it's important that we figure out ways to work with each other, and when you disagree, why? 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 And you start out by finding out the information that's available to you. The importance of this meeting... The importance of this meeting is not that it's a half an hour or one hour long. If that's what you're here for, you came to the wrong room. You take the time necessary to be able to convey to each other what your thoughts are, why they are what they are, and why they should be considered important. And my responsibility is to make sure that I understand what you're saying. Now, that doesn't mean in the end, I'm going to agree with you, but at least I've learned what's important to you. I spent yesterday afternoon with Steve. He's a conservative Republican, and I'm a progressive Democrat. And I learned a lot from him yesterday afternoon, and hopefully, he learned something from me. But that only comes about through time. You have to work with each other, you have to ask that question, and it's so important. We're going to be embarking upon the most important project that Saco has seen in 75 years, a new school. And if we can't figure out how to work with each other and get those who disagree with us for us to understand why, without doing that, the last time around, five years ago, we ended up with a town divided within itself. And that's no way to build a new school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussions? School Board Member Shiman.
I just want to mention that we had a very nice discussion with you, but I am not a conservative Republican, that's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. More further discussion? Seeing no discussion, seeing no discussion, moving on to adjournment, is there a motion? School Board Member Walters.
I move we adjourn the regular meeting of the school board and enter into workshop for the purpose of discussion on ways to improve communication to the community.
Second?
Second.
School Board Member, has been a motion and second. Any discussion? A roll call vote. School Board Member Leary?
Yes.
School Board Member Walters?
Yes.
School Board Member Shiman?
Yes.
School Board Member Tardif?
Yes.
School Board Member Mazden?
Yes.
School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to move into, move to adjourn the regular meeting of the school board and enter into workshop for the purpose of discussion on ways to improve communication to the community, which will take place right here at the square setup, the table setup. And that's at seven seventeen. We're going to take a five-minute recess before the commencement of the workshop.
Are we going to there?
Yes.
vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I know that was...
Yeah.
No, I appreciate that taking the time to have the discussion. I know that there's been, just to make sure that everyone sort of feels like we're going into it on the same page.
I think that's important, the time piece, that was really important, because...
Well, I'm just, that's...
It's the reality of it, yeah.
They're all, you know, I've had some, you know... Someone that has the time, that can come in, but the problem is, like, the past three years, no one, no one on the board knows everything that's going on, so, and they all, so, someone, whoever's going to do it, has, we have to figure out a way to do that. Yeah. And then, people that want to know more, like I've invited, you know, Beth and Stan, you just need to come in. I already put an email to them, I think I CCG'd you. Come on in, and I'll fill you in on anything you want to know.
I just want people to know that I think they're a bit of a sleight card, and they need to learn how to spell it.
You're awesome.
What am I doing?
Love it.
You're sitting there.
I'm sitting here.
So you can hear me.
Thank you.
You can sit here, you can sit here, where do you want to sit?
I think that's all right.
Fiduciary. Fiduciaries, or, fiduciary, fiduciary. Shouldn't use that word. They're still going back to find out who said that word. Are we back?
Okay, I...
So, how are you?
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're back now on the workshop. The workshop kind of came together as a result of some communication through email, asking for increased communication, so if there's no leadoff by the current chair, then I'll defer to School Board Member Walters, who was the, kind of asked for the meeting, asked for the workshop.
Talk about communication. We're going to have to be passing the mic around, this should be, this awkward mic, this is interesting. No, I appreciate having the opportunity to have this conversation tonight, and hopefully, it's the first of several moving forward, but I definitely felt strongly after just the last several months leading up into this new year, and hearing from community members and staff, and even internally here on the board, that there is some definite challenges when it comes to communication. And I think there's, there's a number of areas that we can go in into, but I personally felt that I, that this was an important enough issue, that we needed to start the year off right from the get-go, having this conversation, and figuring out a plan on how we can be better and do better moving forward. I prepared some notes just to sort of help guide this conversation, because, again, I think we should acknowledge that it could be a very messy conversation about communication, which maybe shouldn't be, but, and I think there's a number of layers that we're probably going to want to consider tackling over the next several months, but one place that we could start is the general, the greater community, thinking about our, how do we address information that's going out, out to the community? What are the channels that we're currently utilizing to get information out, and what are potential opportunities that we may be able to explore moving forward? And then also having a conversation around content coming in. So we do have a number of board, of policies that help guard, or guide us in how we respond to community members or staff, and encouraging folks to revisit those policies, but are there other things that we should be considering on how to react to communication coming in to individual board members and to just us as a whole? So if it's, did I frame it up okay? Any questions at this point? No? So I think it might be good to just maybe start the conversation talking about what are our current communication strategies going out? So as decisions are made, or as information is coming out here at the board level, how are we communicating that out to our community partners? I have some notes, but I guess I'll kind of turn it over to say, my first question was, is there currently like a communication plan to address communication going out?
So that was one of our goals that we met this summer. If you guys remember, we developed three goals. One was a communication plan, the other one was strategic planning, which we'll talk about, we've already started that and talked about that in an email, and the third was something we already did, I forgot, infrastructure, and we're well along the way for that. So I guess we don't have a communication plan. Other districts, and again, with the third, so how we communicate, I mean, for my office, this is the superintendent message, I don't know how many people read that, but it's really what's going on in the schools, and that's what's most important, because the common denominator for all of us is why we're here, is for the kids, and so that gets a lot of steam and a lot of pickup. I know Chris is here, I don't know, there's like 1,500 hits on that most of the time, there are links, there's a lot of stuff like that, but that's, that's how we communicate. Other systems, and I haven't had a board chair yet that wanted to do this, but they could actually, they, for example, where I live, the board chair actually writes a letter to the community, not the school, not me, but the board chair. So that's a possibility that we could look at. And I, you know, because I did some other research around that, that's primarily what the board chair does in most districts, not all, every district does that, but...
I just wanted to ask how frequently the board chair would be sending a letter out?
Some districts do it monthly, some districts do it quarterly, and then some districts don't do it at all, or like twice a year, or, you know, once a year. I think once a month is good, I think where we need to be is probably once a month.
I think there are different aspects to that question, about how you go about it. One possibility is to do what I believe is done on the city side, and I believe they have someone to help provide communications. It is, in my experience, as in a role much like the superintendent's role as director of private schools, it's difficult for that person themselves to respond in the way they should to people who have questions. And it becomes a little more independent if there is another person, the chairperson of the board, or some person that you hire to do that. I do think that the premise of this, and I had discussed this with Emily to begin with, is very important, because I don't think we have done a good job as a board, and I personally as well. It's been difficult to communicate and get across what we see. Sometimes it's difficult because the issues involve personnel, where someone can say to us things we can't answer, and in other cases, or we feel we can't answer, it's very difficult. In other cases, there are legal considerations that force us not to respond, and yet, the issues are important that people bring up. So the frustration, I think that there's, I don't think there's a single board member that hasn't had a lot of frustration at that, because we want to be responsive. I don't think we've been responsive enough, and we have to find a way to do it, and that's the way I see it.
One of the ideas I had also was to hire somebody outside of the system, but someone, my goal would be someone who was familiar with education, because I think it has to be pretty specific if we have a marketing person, and they really need to understand the system and education in general. So that was just something I thought about, and I don't think it has to be full-time. My thought was even just start part-time, maybe five or eight hours a week, and just see how it goes, but we definitely need somebody to do that position, and I think that's asking an awful lot of a chair, because I think the time involved, and we all, well, other than Steve, none of us are in the educational system, our jobs aren't in the educational system, and so we're still, every week I learn more about the educational system, so I don't think I would be comfortable ever doing a position like that, and I don't know how many people, how many of us would be, so that's why I would recommend someone other than the chair doing that.
To me, one of the things that we do a very poor job at, and that's using what we already have. The school board meetings, for example, we should be looking at that as an opportunity for communicating something about the Saco school system. And I'm not talking about just bringing a parade of kids in and putting on plays, I'm talking about things like what we are dealing with on an everyday basis as part of the school board, that you meet people on the sidewalk. All of us have that experience, and we need to be more aware of that as an opportunity, not as somebody we should be hiding from, but as an opportunity to be able to convey to them something about the school system. Now, that takes effort, that takes time, and sometimes that's very difficult to deal, but it is something that we need to get better at. In our meetings, we need to think more about the person that's sitting out there, who doesn't have the knowledge that you do, and yet, they need to understand what you're doing. Are we telling them something that helps them do that? And I would argue, no. We take a vote. We have policies identified by a complex of letters and numbers. We don't even know what those are. Who do you, what do you think the person out there knows about that? We need to think more about the person that's sitting out there, who doesn't have the knowledge that you do, and yet, they need to understand what you're doing. Are we telling them something that helps them do that? And I would argue, no. We take a vote. We have policies identified by a complex of letters and numbers. We don't even know what those are. Who do you, what do you think the person out there knows about that? We need to think more about the person that's sitting out there in the audience that we're supposedly working for, and we're leaving them out of the conversation by not allowing them to participate because of the way we do things. And I agree, that takes time, but that's our job. That's why we're here. That's an excuse if you don't do it, and a dereliction of duty.
Follow-up? Oh, God. What would you envision a way that we could do that? Like, what would a solution be? Or like, an idea of how you could see whether we're improving, or something that we could Or like, an idea of how you could see whether we're improving, or something that we could try that could help to improve? Oh, we got ours.
Well, one of the reasons why I brought up have workshops, and I think it's very important because if a committee can bring something before the workshop, we can discuss it to see if we want to vote on it. And that's where the people will hear about it. I mean, the last couple of months, all we've heard is, "School board's not saying what's going on." We couldn't. We were all in executive session all the time. And it made us look bad, worse than it should have, because we couldn't talk about it. And then all of a sudden, things come out slowly. However, if different committees meet and they want to bring something before the school board, and want to know whether we want to vote on it or not, workshop's the place to do it. And it's out in the open. People can discuss it if they want to. They don't, if the mayor doesn't want to let them speak, he doesn't have to, but he can. And important things comes up, even if they don't speak, at least they're going to know what we're talking about. And if they're interested, they're going to be here. And I think it's important. The council does it, and I think it always worked out well. And at least they're used to it. I don't know if you still have them. But I thought it always worked out well because you get to discuss everything before it comes on whether you vote on it or not. When I first come on the board, things would come up, and I'd look at that, and I'd say, "How can I vote on that? I don't know anything about it." And I've talked to them about it quite a bit. I mean, you can't vote on something you know nothing about. And I think workshops are important for that.
One of the things that I'm not sure I'm following in direct order here, but one of the most frustrating things, if somebody writes to the entire board, it doesn't get answered. And if somebody writes to me in my ward, I always answer. That's easy. But if the thing is not direct, is directed to the group, I think that one of the communication problems, people to understand that as we are individual, when we're not in a board meeting, we're simply individuals. So we can't respond to something directed to the board as a whole because we can't speak for the board. You can only speak for yourself. So in some cases, I've taken the liberty to answer something that didn't get directed to me, it went to the whole board, just simply saying that this is my view of it. But I cannot say, "Speak for the board." We need some way to answer a letter, and we also should encourage people to send to their individual ward people. That's the system, because they can respond to that. They can respond. When it's directed to everybody, it becomes a real problem because who answers for it? And if that does happen, we need a system to be able to cope with it because unanswered letters build up frustration and anger. And that's what I think that we can do a better job with. Specifically, I don't know how to handle that.
That's fine. So I think you have to be careful how you answer on social media. If you want to email somebody privately, that's fine. But if you start getting back and forth, you're going to be arguing with people all the time. And if you want to have somebody call you, or you call them, or you meet with them, have coffee, that's fine. Then you're expressing your own personal feelings. However, you start going back and forth on emails, on social media, and you're going to have everybody in town involved with different opinion.
Art has talked about this topic almost from the time he's been on the school board. And I'll give him credit for being the one that made me start thinking about how uncommunicative our meetings are. They're even incommunicative as a committee. I go to almost all of the committee meetings, and one of the reasons I do is because that's the only way I can find out what's going on. The reports from the committee are a bullet list that are understandable only to those who were there. And there's no real information that's passed to you. When we had our retreat back in August, I was the one that brought up workshops. This kind of thing that Art is talking about is what I had in mind. That's where the committee should be coming, to the workshop, so that we can ask questions, we can discuss it. And then, when you go into a meeting to vote on something, now you've got the knowledge that you need in order to be able to react to it intelligently. Because of the way things are handled, most of us sitting there are in Art's position. I don't know. So how do you vote? Well, I looked down the line, I say, "Okay, I like the way she votes, particularly on this issue here." So when my name is called, and what that makes me think of is town meeting. Has anybody here been in town meetings? That's a very educational process. In Farmington, I was a counter. And I was one of the ones that used to count the hands on the votes that were taken. So I would be sitting up in the gym seats, the bleacher seats. I was assigned that area to count. And there was an issue involving the college, UMF. And there was amendments on top of amendments on top of amendments, and it got very difficult to follow what we were even voting on. So one guy that was sitting in back of me in the bleachers says, "I'm losing track. I don't know what we're voting on anymore." His buddy sitting there next to him says, "It's easy. You see that guy down there? He's pointing at the chancellor for the university. However he votes, you vote the other way." That's what happens when you don't know what's going on. And that's what, how you end up with dumb votes and mistakes because you haven't been given the opportunity to know what it is that's going on. And we can't do that.
So it sounds like you're on board with more workshops. So you feel confident that if we conduct some of our business more in a workshop format, you'll feel more informed? But I'd also encourage anyone who, and I know you do this, but I'm just saying as a general statement, that if you ever feel uncomfortable or have questions about something that we're being asked to vote on, to request that maybe we get some more information and not rush to a vote that maybe you're not fully on board with. I'm just making that general comment. But other, any other?
I think we're dealing with, it's really a complex issue because if you do everything as a board as a whole, because that's basically, you do your workshop and then you do your vote, it's going to require a lot more time on the part of people because everyone has to be involved in that process. I always had the impression that the council actually, as a, members meet just about every week as a whole. Am I correct on that?
He didn't meet every week.
Pretty close. And we don't. And so the committee system was an attempt to be able to divide out the things that have and then report back to the board. So, and I understand that the public meeting, the concept, there's a strength and weakness to that, and it works great in some circumstances and other ones doesn't. But to really, for everybody to know everything is difficult because it means a lot more time on a lot part of a lot of people. And I just caution on that one.
So, you know, another solution to get to sort of what Stanley's saying is, you know, when we do have our board meetings, we have the chairs report for each of the committees. That quite, you know, quite honestly, you know, I report out on personnel, which we've reused that, or we've reallocated that time for negotiations, but the chairs of the committees could do a better job at summarizing sort of the work that has been happening. I mean, I think Beth does a really great job of like, sort of going over some of the things that were, in a little more detail. So that could, like, maybe if you're a chair of a committee, committing to spending a little more time to really be able to outline so that you can, when we report out, not only for the board members here, but the community, like some of those key elements that were talked about. And I know from a strategic committee standpoint, I mean, we're going through a lot of policy reviews. I mean, that's sort of been, our charge has been to go through the policies. And so certainly, we can do a better job at, you know, we send them out beforehand, but then announcing them, explaining a little bit about what they are before we make the vote on any policy revisions, but.
We should also have another meeting pretty soon about policies, the ones we want to add on, the ones we want to change. There's still some we've talked about, but we haven't put them in yet.
So there's not anything really that's been said here that I disagree with. I think that I personally have always wanted to be involved in a lot of committees because I do think Stanley's right, that's where a lot of information can be acquired. And I would encourage all of us to go to other meetings that we aren't necessarily part of those committees, just even if it's occasionally, so you get sort of the spirit of what's going on in that committee. I'm sure we can all do better jobs of trying to relay that information back to the board as a whole. I do think workshops are a good way, as everyone seems to have pointed out, to kind of go over material before it comes anywhere near a vote, so that we all hopefully understand it. So I would, again, I would encourage people to attend other meetings, other committee meetings that they may not actually be a part of. I had another thought, it's gone out of my head, but there's something that I did want to mention, which is coming from outside of me for sure, because I am not into the tech stuff. I mean, that's not my forte at all. But I do think that, I've heard that we need to have a better, our website is not so mobile-friendly. An awful lot of parents these days, they know how to use the technology, and apparently lots of people get it right on their phone. So just throwing out the comment that perhaps in the area of technology, we can improve the ability for parents in the community to get information through their mobile devices. So that's just another very similar, dissimilar to the rest of our conversation, but Chris, would you, would you give us a minute? That'd be great. Thank you.
I feel like a game show host. Okay, Chris Draker, technology director, for those that don't know who I am. Just to kind of backtrack a little bit, as you mentioned, our website is not really responsive as much as I would hope. I think when we entered into that agreement, we were expecting a little bit more as far as the responsiveness on mobile devices. I'm not satisfied with it, and we've started to take steps to move away from that. Back up even further, as you're aware, at some point, the city decided, due to security issues, they took downtown hall streams, which is what we've used to stream meetings for most of our public. At that time, it was probably the end of August. Not a great time for us, but due to security, that's what you do. You pull the plug and adapt. Since then, at that time, I started working with Emily Roy, who was the communications director with the City of Saco, and she's amazing. One of the things, Kevin Sutherland, when he was here, I know he got a lot of heat for many decisions that he might have made at various points, but one of the things he did do was he put in a communications person for the City of Saco, and picked the right person to do it because it's amazing the stuff that they pump out to promote our city. Since that time, Andrew Dickinson, he's the communications coordinator with the city, I've also worked with him in regards to the new process for streaming meetings, which you'll see now we're on Facebook. We are also taking our files and putting them on YouTube, much like the city is. And as far as the website's concerned, we are moving away from our current vendor, and we will be moving towards the same vendor that the City of Saco is currently using for their website. And the idea here is to essentially be uniform for the city, so that, I've gotten a lot of feedback from a lot of different people, a variety of things on communication. Part of that is my responsibility as, by default in some ways, because it's a technology thing. But one of the things I've heard loud and clear is, citizens want to be able to have one point of contact for meetings, for notes, for if I want to go see an archived video, they want to go to one place. They don't want to go, oh, well, I have to go over here for the schools, over here for the municipal environment. They want to go to one possible spot. I feel as a taxpayer here, this is a huge opportunity for us to collaborate with the city. There are numerous issues throughout the years that I think we all could do a little bit better on, on both sides of the aisle. But I think, given my relationship with Emily and the communications department, I think we should at least entertain working with them on a closer basis. That could be hiring another communications person for the school. But you look, TA has a marketing department. They make sure that the stuff they want to put out there is the stuff they want out there and be responsive. City does the same thing, and I think we should do the same thing.
I just want to add to something I'm saying. I'm fully supportive of the notion of, I'll be, the idea that's been raised to me, I'll come back a step, to work directly with the city, being in the person that they have. There is a little difference between the city side of thing and the school board side of thing. And whereas I do believe that we should, it might be incorporated as part of, one of the same thing with an expanded person from the school side, when you explain the school side, it's a little bit different than the city side. Because of, by statute, we are not, we're independent of that. On the other hand, we are part of the city. So I, you know, I think that what you raised, Beth, and what you've raised is very, very important, and it gets to the heart of the matter. I also want to make reference to what you said, Beth, before, because, and this is in reference to what Stan said, is that when Beth makes reports, I think you do have a view in mind to educate the public when you give the report. And I was thinking back on that, when you do it, that's part of what we all have to do. In other words, when you speak, you're speaking not only to educate the board. I think part of it is, we get to, oh, these are the policies, and they're all listed on the things that we all have here. Nobody out there knows what's going on. It's not easy to do, but somehow we have to do a better job of saying, this is what the policy's all about. Because it's, if there's a way to do it, I'd like to do that, at least for people who'd like to know in the public.
One thing I'd like to add to the conversation, we've got, what, 500 employees?
Including Saco.
And yet, we have no problems. Who's seen a report that's listed problems? I can't believe that. I've never seen an organization of this size that has no issues. When we got the report from the principals, I want to hear, what do they need help in? I want to know they're having a problem in this area. I'm not looking for a surprise next month because of something that existed three months ago.
You made me nervous when you started.
Yeah. I know all about, you got... Yeah, I know all about, you've got to be careful and everything else, I know that well. But we need to have better communications and more communications about issues that need to be attended to, and maybe that means that we have to shift resources, that means we have to hire somebody to help us in an area, we're talking about communications, that means that we have to build a new building, that means whatever it is, we need to start talking about these. You don't solve them by ignoring them.
I really appreciate that, Stanley. Like, we, when we come to our board meetings, we do get their directors and principals reports, and I love reading them, and it is, it's exciting to hear about all the awesome, everything that's, all the good that's happening in the schools, whether it's the programs, it's exciting, right? But yeah, it would be, I think it would be nice to open those communication lines even more, to hear some of like, what are some of the things that we're struggling with, instead of having it come up when I think, and again, this is only, this is my second year going through the budget season, but I think they tend to come up during like budget season, when there's like needs, but to be able to know ahead of time or throughout the year, I think that would be, that would be really helpful.
Not meaning to cut you off, but along the same lines, I agree, it'd be good to know the things that maybe aren't working so well. But I also think we should, it's great when we get those reports, but I think we need to focus on them more. And I'm guilty of not focusing more and bringing it up more in our conversations. I mean, I would like to see Mr. Superintendent, I would like to see, not every time perhaps, but having those directors or principals actually explain to us what's in their report, and then if we have questions that occur to us, we can go ahead and ask them. But it's something that I think we should really focus on, because the good information is something that needs to get out there too. And so we read the reports, sometimes we comment on them, a lot of times, we haven't really had enough opportunity to read them thoroughly. So I know on a couple of occasions, I've asked for us to come back to the next meeting and maybe look at it again. Sometimes we do that, and sometimes we don't really do it very well. So I am definitely suggesting that when we want to get information out to the public, if we focused a bit more on those reports, and you know, either had someone come and explain it to us, a director or whatever, or at least discuss it ourselves, it would help get more information out to the public.
Yeah, in reference to this, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that we need to hear the challenges as well as the good points. I mean, and, but that really should come through the educational system. We have to be very careful we don't micromanage the educational system. I'm very sensitive of that, because I've been in that position of trying to, you know, where they have a board working over me. And that is a very important issue, a very important point, that it has to be through the educational system, but we need to know what the challenges are as well as, and that can be stated, that's fine. You know, somebody can say, there's, these are the things that are really going well, these are things that we really would like to improve on. I mean, that being stated, but be careful about taking over what the role of educational people in leadership is, because that makes it difficult for them to operate. Yeah, that's just my point.
So I've been writing down some notes, because it's been going back and forth. The directors or principals are here, like especially during the business meeting, and they're willing and ready to get up to the microphone and talk about anything that's in those reports and more. So, you know, if you do, you know, and they're always here, so if there's, if the, you know, if the combined reports, if there's something in there and you want to bring it up, that's always on that agenda, the business agenda, which kind of goes into my second point. So again, I can't believe I've been here this long, so I've got actually a lot of history, so Beth and I have the most history on the board. So when I first came here, we did workshops, and we did one business meeting, one workshop. Then it was told, no more workshops, we're only doing business meetings, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Sorry, I think the way it evolved is that we found that we had so many things that were on our agenda to vote on, that we, the workshop's going to get.
So I think that, with a combination of other things, that communication piece of that, we couldn't workshop a lot of things. So I think, I agree with most of you, workshops are really important, so we can get in here and get some of this stuff out and talk about it. And, I'll save the other one.
Thank you for that. Actually, we, at the city council side, have actually adopted from you guys some agenda item ideas. And the way we've now formulated our meetings is, our meetings will be once a month, or excuse me, once a week, but it'll happen four times a month. And it'll all be meetings, that way there, they're all televised, because I want the transparency in the community, and so the council said, okay, that's a great idea, move forward with the rules and order of business, and changed it so that we meet once a week. And it's all televised, but we went to the, kind of mirrored the same agenda that you had, where it's new business, old business. But new business actually takes the place of workshops. So you don't actually vote on anything new business. New business comes before, the council, you get all kinds of information, can ask all kinds of questions, and then it comes before us, an old business or action item is what we're looking to change it to at future meetings. But in the sense that you're meeting weekly, there's always a meeting going on, so you can always vote on things and start moving the process forward, so you don't have those workshops where it's just a workshop, and there's so much stuff coming into the community that you're not able to take action. So we've kind of mirrored what the school board has been doing for a long time, and created a hybrid system that works for the council to get, to get stuff accomplished for the city. So your new chair, whenever you elect one, I believe next week, can set that agenda to follow that. So if you want more communication when it comes before you on new business, that can act as your workshop, so that you can ask questions, go through, get, you know, get the answers to your questions, and then at a future meeting, vote on it. And in between those two, you as a board member can reach out to the superintendent and get the answers to some of the questions that you have, and then relay that to constituents, just as the council does and has for the four years I've sat on council. So, you know, it may be a system where your chair takes the ball that you already have and runs with it the way it's set up. That's what it seems that would help communication, because that's what it's, through the notes that I've gotten, that's what some of the issue is, is that you can't get information when something's brought forward to a vote. So that, it might be as simple as that. There is another large piece on the communication of having somebody outside the district, maybe a communications director or somebody part-time, five to 10 hours a week to start to see how that works, and I'll pass it along, but I just wanted to say that we kind of mirrored some of your agenda ideas in the formulation of the council meeting agendas,
I think the public relations person that we're talking about at halftime, I agree, it has to be someone that knows public schools, can't be someone, they have to know what's really going on. It also helps my staff, because we're taking time out to put out this, I won't say fake news, but news that is not correct. So, you know, we can't be doing that, we have to be more proactive in having this, almost be like a, you know, writing, because there's no more like real papers anymore, like Liz used to be here, and was very good and fair about that. Now it's, it's, we need to put our, what's really going on out there, not the superintendent message, because that's all about kids and the good stuff. It's really explaining, what does the board chair do? What's the roles? We're going to really get into, because most people don't understand how all this works. And then, you know, then we have, then we have to put something out, or we have to say no. So I think it's really being proactive, and I think that's, that's the most important thing, and really talk about the budget process, and, you know, but write it in layman terms, like what you were talking about, Steve, it's not, we, we're in it all the time, so we start talking about all this stuff like an EDU 279. Well, what is that? What do you understand? Where does that preschool money come from? We're spending taxes on that. Where does that really come from? And have someone really explain it in detail. So being more proactive, I think that's what's really important. So, and most of my staff talking, that's what they really would like.
I was listening to what Stanley was saying about using our resources that we already have, and we don't even know if there's anybody already in the school system that has experience doing this. Stanley might be right, we might have someone that's really good at something like this internally already, and we just need to find that person.
No, I agree. One of the things that we should gain out of exercises like this is finding out more about what we at this table have available that's not being drawn on, that's extremely important. There's too much, too much said about those of us at this table not knowing anything. How many people here know that I have three master's degrees? As a result of yesterday afternoon? That I was a college professor? And I went through three different, what I call, beauty schools, how to be an instructor? And that I taught in a system where if you are not doing too well, the class was stopped, and you were removed from the platform, as we used to call it. And I'm not saying therefore, I should be drawn on for whatever, I'm just saying that when I look around the table, I feel every single one of you can make a list like that. And we all need to be drawing on it, along with other people sitting out there. We need to call on them.
So Stanley, we talked about this today in leadership, and Julie, what is the buzzword that we talked about today when we sit together, time on, what was the word you used? Sorry.
It was what you.
I know, it was, it was very catchy. Spending time together, the experience. Shared, yep, you're almost there. That's what you're talking about, we talked about that today. Julie will come up with it, but that's the buzzword that we're going to use.
I don't know how, I'm sorry, I didn't really have anything to say, but now that I have the mic, I did want to, and I, and you know, there's, time is not of an, is not an issue for us, so we could just keep on going with this conversation, but I am mindful of the time, and that I feel, like I feel really good about sort of come, that we've come up with some concrete strategies and ideas on some, some things that we can do moving forward. I'm going to offer to summarize some of this, and I don't know, I think Celeste's probably taking notes as well, but I will also sort of capture what I was hearing as some ideas and strategies as well, and maybe we can compare notes. But I did want to spend a couple minutes, if we could, to talk a little bit about our communication coming in. So, you know, we've referenced a little bit about the emails we get coming in, and, you know, I, I think it's, I'd like to just sort of talk through like how, I guess, like, what are some other ways for us to hear from the community and from parents around the work that we're doing, you know, or around decisions that are being made? I think oftentimes, it's when there's something controversial that's coming up, that that's when we have people coming in, but I, I'm just looking for, is there another way, other strategies for us to hear from the community and that we would want to explore, whether it's town hall meetings, or listening sessions, or if there's something that's been done in the past, that might be a way of, so, oh, Julie's raising her hand. Julie, would you like to come up here?
I have an idea. If there could be a place on the website where people could submit questions, and I'm trying to think of something that you had had frequently asked questions, and you were able to put information out there that.
I've done that with staff.
Yeah, give staff an opportunity to, sometimes I have them. Yeah, give staff, give people an opportunity to ask a question and whatnot.
Chris is thinking about work on the website.
So on the website currently, there is a, it's more of a generalized contact us mechanism, but we have done this in the past, I think during budget season. We've had topics within the budget, and we've had directors or whoever respond to the questions, the public or the board or whoever brought forth. We could certainly do something similar, and again, you could tie that into whoever, if we had somebody for a PR person that could collate a lot of that stuff, present it, and put it out there. One other thing is, if you look at the Facebook stream, you'll notice on the city streams, they have slideshows before and after, and during executive session. That is another opportunity that we could create content on certain things, where we could put it out to the public. Again, I reiterate this, if this is a direction that we collectively went at some point, it is a large undertaking, and there's two people at City Hall, and there's probably others that I'm not aware of that are doing a lot of work to put this stuff together. So it is, is a big endeavor.
What is this slide?
There's just, it's more like a PowerPoint presentation. There's a couple of slides, usually at the front before the meeting starts, and then at the end, and then there's also some when you go to executive session. Rather than public staring at a blank screen for two hours, they look at something, and it usually presents a lot of content for public, so.
So I think that, I think that's where we put the, you know, it's on the website, but we put the most commonly, new questions that have come up, so that people can answer. So where does the preschool money come from? In a real clear, and just keep coming down through, I know I'm hitting that, because that, that's a big one.
Oh, I mean, that's one of the things that we've, oh, yes, that's just one of the things, and I understand why you keep bringing it up, because it's, has come up quite a bit.
To tie in to some of the things that Stan said, some of the things he said before, we could, it's a matter of carrying out some of the things we're talking about, have the chairperson recommend to us as a group, some specifics to cover these things, because it's difficult to do it as, that's one of the roles I think that the leadership should provide, is make some, or present some ideas to this group that we can agree on as ways to make these things happen, because we've talked about a lot of good things, but we have to somehow coalesce them.
That's funny, I was just sitting here thinking, back in '64, when I first got on the police department, we had a police chief that was, been on about 30 years, chappel guy, and he used to say, you know, when you're in the public too much and in the paper, it's not a good thing, out of sight, out of mind. So it's two sides.
One thing I would like to go back to in terms of the conversation that we had about communications, and that's in terms of the selection of the, of the chair and the vice chair. And I have to keep correcting myself, because I'm revealing my age when I keep talking about he, and it's not necessarily he. And as a matter of fact, that's a big mistake to even mention it that way. But one of the things that we need to talk about and think about, terms of communication, and that is, that's the reason you want to pick a topic like that for communication, that's a topic the public pays attention to. Who's the chair? You may think that the only one interested is you, there's people at this table, not true. The people that are. The people that are out there watching this right now with this being broadcast, all of them are interested in who the chair is going to be. The moms that, at the bus stops that are meeting their kids are interested in who the chair is. And so we're missing a bet if we don't use that as an opportunity to communicate about us. And the way we conduct ourselves when we're doing that exercise, that's how they gain an impression about what kind of a school board are we? Do we look like we know what we're doing? Are we paying attention? Are we conducting business that they expect to have? And if we don't pay attention to details like that, that's how the image gets out there. We don't know what we're doing. So I would say we need to pay a lot more attention to these things and think about them in terms of the perception that we create. Not because we're stupid, but because we're watching the wrong ball. So next week, when we come together and we start talking about selecting a chair, that's a serious exercise for the public. And it should be. It should be. You're giving somebody the authority to draw up the agenda. You're giving somebody the authority to call a public, to attention of the public to certain issues. You're giving somebody the authority to call us together for a meeting, et cetera, et cetera. And even though Bill is the chair of the meeting, the chair of the board is the one that's drawing up our design, not something to be ignored, a major topic. And the question that I raise is a serious question. If the chair disagrees with the superintendent, then what? And it's extremely important, you've got two people involved who have all of us writing at that point. And we saw the disasters in the past, and that's why we need to be thinking about things like that. That's what's happening when you're picking a chair.
I just want to point out though, Stan, it's a little bit different than we're running for mayor here. None of us are running to be chairman. I mean, that, it's a little bit different. We, we, we would be glad, some of us to serve as chairman if other people would like to have us. But it is not a question that we're running for mayor and we're going to posture in order to get it. I don't think you're going to find too many members of the board to do that because it's the nature of our board. It's not, it's not the same kind of thing. If I wanted to run to be mayor, I'd lose. But, 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 you know, that's not the kind of thing that I would want to do. But, but, and Bill did a very good job of doing that, of running and being successful. But this is not the same thing that people are going to go around the table posturing and say, I should be chairman of this school board because of the fact that we're working with one another here, and it's however it works out, I think it's never perfect. But it's, I think one of the big considerations is that whoever works with the superintendent should be a person that is at least reasonably on the same wavelength as the superintendent, so you don't get into situations where you're fighting each other. That really shouldn't be the case, because in normal human relations, that's always a problem, that you are dealing with somebody else that has a different point of view than you do, and somehow you come to a resolution. And that is part of our ability to be able to work with people. That's part of the ability of the chairperson to be able to work with somebody, is to come to an agreement. I mean, that's the way I see it. But I don't think you're going to see people around here, I want to be chairperson and these are my credentials. I don't see that.
Oh, I'll, no, I mean, I did, but I'll uphold it.
I just think it needs to be, because I have not had a consistent person meet with me since I've been here, and it's been five years. We've had a little run, but it wasn't consistent. So it has to be consistent. And it's good for me because I need to run off stuff, you know, run things by people, and, and the person's got to be honest and give honest feedback. So I think that's the other thing I wanted to say.
I guess I would like to ask you, Mr. Superintendent, what your recommendation would be in terms of like the regularity, the timeframe of, of meeting with you?
What? I personally, weekly, I mean, it doesn't have to be every week, you know, it can be very fluid, but, you know, if there's, you know, for like this week, I'm just thinking of the, like, I have got at least two or three things that I could share with the board chair that's going on, that no one really knows about, but they need to know about it, right? So, I mean, sometimes, I mean, I filled you in on a few things because she's vice chair, but it's someone to come in and then, you know, you don't want to put that stuff on email because of, because you can, because it's legal. But there's a lot of stuff going on all the time. Does that make sense? So I would think, I think weekly, and then sometimes it doesn't have to, so it's really going to be, you know, and it can't be after, you know, when we have all the, you know, you can't do it like during the committee meetings, because every week, we've got how many meetings going on? So January's crazy, and then budget's starting. That's another whole thing that's, then we have the meetings with the city, which I forget the schedule, so.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your explanation of it, because I do agree with you that it needs to happen quite frequently and predictably, and whether it's every week or maybe you skip one now and then, at least that consistency of really keeping the information flowing is really important. So, thank you.
I know. I told, I told Art during the break that in the military, when I was an instructor there, I was known as the guy who could squeeze five hours of instruction in, pardon me, five minutes of instruction into five hours anytime. So, so, and I, so I accept the compliments coming from the right here. No, I just wanted to say that I feel that we've touched on some things that we should start acting on. Not, not walk away, haven't talked about these, and bring these things up, and then next week, we're back to whatever. We need, start right away to be doing some of the things that we've put out.
That's where I was going, Chris, thank you. So, I don't know if you want to summarize, but I, I had three big points. You, next week, you, we workshop the idea of a public relations person, whether it's halftime, whatever it is, that you guys will talk about that next week. In new bus, in new business. Wherever we want to put it. Two, we talked about questions and answers and how we want to do that, so I'll work with Chris around that. And three was, what was the other thing? Shoot. Okay. Oh, workshops. So, you know, I think you need to discuss, do you want the first, the first school board business meeting? And I kind of, I've been thinking about this, so it actually gives me a good idea. This is a draft for you guys to look at. The, this is the budget timeline. It includes all of the business meetings, which are the first of the month, and then the workshops at the end. Whatever the workshop is, typically it's going to be about budget, but then you can workshop other things. I think one, one thing that we do need to workshop is infrastructure, because there's a lot of stuff that you all know about, but I don't think the rest of the board knows what's going on, because there's been a lot of action and a lot of communication with the city around that, so I'm not going to talk about that now.
A number of us, a number of us have been talking about budgets. One of the things that we're interested in, the RADS from last year, did we do them? Were they successful? Or they weren't done because of the following, whatever? We would like some kind of accounting of all of those.
Stan, you're right on the, right on the action on this. We talked about that today. We are, next leadership team meeting, we're planning that out. Just a sneak preview, we're, our budget is, Jason is pulling everything together. It is very minimal. There are not many RADS. All the RADS have to do is space. But hearing that, we will put that in, and we'll talk about the RADS because of last year and how important they were. So when our principals or directors talk, they'll report out on those RADS, because we really don't have new RADS to go forward. And last thing before I go, in the packet, because one of the things we really want to talk about is communication, so Julie sent out a survey to all the preschool parents. We had about a 50% return rate almost, and it's for you guys to read. I wanted to make sure you guys read it first, and then we'll post it on the website. But it's, it's, the program is great. I think the only thing that parents would like to have in the future would be under one roof, but that is what infrastructure is dealing with, as well as the city. So this is for you, and then I'll put this on the post, but I just want to make sure I wanted to address that tonight.
So, back to this potential position that we discussed for, as PR, I think we need to decide, do we do it as a stipend? Do we do it as a RAD? So, you know, those are things that we need to think on, and I agree as like this, right, I was getting there. So we, we need to decide, like, should we do, I feel it's so important that this is something that we should get on right away, like Stan said, and we can start maybe as a stipend, because I think we could probably come up with the money somewhere, and then long-term, look at maybe this does need to be more of a permanent position, and we'll have an idea on roughly how many hours work and what doesn't work, and then we might need that added as a RAD for next year's budget.
Something I want to add to that, and that is, I think that we need, we need a person plus a coordinator from the board itself. What you're playing tonight, or you could actually be very good at that, but we need, what you need, we need that. In other words, you need the person, but we also need the direct person on the board that, that coordinates that, and, and other things that might be involved. No? Okay.
We can workshop that. That person would get, or see the Facebook something, and they go to the appropriate department to get the answers, and some answers might have to come here.
Some answers might have to come from the board chair, some answers have to come from the superintendent, some answers might have to come from the special ed department, we just don't know.
So is there more discussion? Any more discussion?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved, second, is there a second? Second, hand vote, all in favor? Unanimous, motion, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.